Good morning. So, good to see everyone. As I picked up my gavel this morning, I could see I've got some new marks on it. So, want to say thanks to Vice Chair Sharpless over there for stepping in while we're out. Had a great, successful time up in Washington DC and connected with a large swath of our congressional members and their staff members as well, as well as our senators advocating for our Polk County Public Schools. So, yeah, I was driving in this morning and was pondering a bit, and this quote came up, and it was actually referenced to C.S. Lewis, and I'm like, "Oh, okay, I wonder what text it came from." And then I couldn't actually substantiate where the quote came from, but I'm resting on the quote this morning. It says, "You can't go back and change the beginning, but you can start where you are and change the ending." And it really stuck out to me as I was driving in, pondering this morning. So, we will now call the work session for August 23rd, 2025, to order. I can tell we are ready to go. I'm excited. I see our staff members out there, and we do have Ms. Collins stepping in for us as well. So, I just want to say thanks to our staff for being present with us this morning and accessible to us. We're humbled to serve alongside you and the most highly educated workforce in America and the dedicated workforce in our nation as well. So, I'd like to start by reading our "Who Are We?" statement, and it says this, "We are the Polk County Leadership Governance Team, and if we were to pick one phrase to define us, it would be student-centered, because when we come together, we lean on these backgrounds, diverse backgrounds that we have and experiences, to ensure that our decisions are focused on providing a high-quality education for all students. The four most important things to our governance team are, one, operating with integrity; two, respecting our staff, our students, families, and each other; three, establishing this culture where our stakeholders feel valued, they're supported, and have opportunities for personal and professional growth; and four, supporting this approach of continuous improvement to ensure student outcomes. And collectively, we work together on behalf of the children that we serve, and we find these avenues of agreement so that we can govern the district in an effective manner. There is no acceptable alternative to that. We will always collaborate in a respectful manner in order to enhance opportunities for each student and staff member. We will not disparage others. Our students will thrive, because when we remain committed to supporting the whole child, that happens. So, we hope to engage and empower our students and our stakeholders to create this community of lifelong learners." At this time, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Collins to lead us in our work session today.
Good morning. Good to see you, everybody.
Good morning.
Here this morning. Appreciate all the pictures I saw of you guys representing us in Washington DC. Looked like a lot of fun, but a lot of work. So, good morning. I am here standing in for Mr. Hyde. As you know, that he is on his way to Destin for the State Board meeting, and I believe we're going to start the morning with Dr. Melody Ryder. She's here to speak about our wonderful relationship we have with Connect Polk, Connected Polk.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you hear me? Awesome. So, thank you, Chief Collins, and Chair Allen, and all of my school board members. Today, I am here to give a formal overview of who Connected is to the community, our desired impact, outcomes, and plans for the future. Our impact. So, we're an intermediary, which is somewhat new to our area. We are the first of our kind in Polk County, so it has been an ongoing goal and role of mine to really define who we are, and so that's what I want to accomplish today. We really strive for strong, scalable, sustainable partnerships with the business community and our education leaders. We have pillars I'll go through later on in my presentation, but truly, it is about access to high-quality programming. And this access and working across Polk County for this impact and these partnerships will result in stronger, more prepared graduates by inspiring and educating them on opportunities across Polk County. Ultimately, our leaders and our founders did this for economic prosperity purposes, but when they dove into the work, truly understanding the need, it became a moral imperative for them to truly help and raise those that need more access and more inspiration and knowledge about all that goes on across Polk County. So, with that, our mission, we're very mission-driven, we're a very passionate, purposeful group. We really, these partnerships that we want to create are centered around shared goals, that there is a commitment across the table to support, to elevate, and to empower each other, to, really, at the end of the day, it's all about the students. We do this through strategic planning, and I'll talk about that in a moment, because ultimately, we want to continue to have Polk County be the best destination to raise a family, to play, and to work. Our vision. Our vision is very bold, is for all students to have access to high-quality programming, that we have deserts of exposure. We are very, very large. Your job is great and very well-respected, and it's just bringing the business community to have that shared responsibility, which is our key goal. And ultimately, by innovation, innovation is really a strong pillar of ours, to just seek out national best practices and bring them back here to inspire and educate our community on what's possible. Now, our core beliefs are really centered around empowerment, empowering our business leaders, empowering our educators through these strong-built partnerships. It's important that, across the table, and I have several stories, some that have brought me to tears, because I speak myself, I speak fluent education, and I speak fluent business, and bringing those together and understanding what I found is their goals are the same, they're aligned, they just sometimes see things from a different perspective, because they come from different experiences and different backgrounds. But as we talk through it across the table, I meet individually with my school leaders, and I meet individually with our business community, talk through it, and get them at the table. And when we do this, I just sit back and watch the magic happen and remove obstacles, remove misconceptions, perceived accountability when it's truly a community responsibility, and that's where we get to, is that community responsibility, that we're in this together, that there's no finger-pointing of outcomes, but a handshake and a hug usually of what we can do together. But we advocate for our students, but we also want to stand behind our educators, truly partner and have that heavy lift. Business leaders are busy running their organizations and their companies. I have a lot of the largest businesses in our community standing together with our educators and doing the heavy lifting in between. We're really behind the scenes. We're not front and center. Our name's not going to be on any billboard. We just work behind the scenes to create those long-lasting partnerships and walk away and create more. And then from that, more magic happens down the road. We are a nonprofit. We are an intermediary, as I stated. Really, the role of an intermediary is to be that glue, is to be that bridge. Our role is, has been very confusing for many. We are not a chamber. We do not have that many programmings for businesses. We're not a program for businesses. We're not a vision group. We don't have eight different pillars. Our vision groups have heavy, heavy lifts. We're not an EDC. We do not look and seek to bring new businesses here, rather than work with the existing businesses on strategic partnerships, seeing it through their eyes, but then also bringing the perspective of the educators with all their obstacles, and you all have to work under so many constraints, and business leaders just think, "Oh, we can do this, we can do that." Well, that's not always the case, but how can you support that? How can you look at it from a different lens to then sit down together and create opportunities? Our missions, I've worked very closely with several of you. Our mission and our role is very narrow, and so we don't want to confuse ourselves with chamber work, with vision work, and our strategic partners. Our goal is not to duplicate efforts, but to align and work with mission-aligned organizations, other nonprofits, to escalate our work, to scale it. So, as a very confusing intermediary, well, where do you work? What is your place? We're a bridge. We build bridges behind the scenes. We're not out front and center, like I said. Everybody's like, "Well, what are you working on?" Right now, 25 different initiatives, and as you know, a lot of things take time. They take time to launch, lots of conversations, lots of understanding of how can we get businesses more involved? What is their role and what is their commitment and what is their responsibility? As well as, then educators have to say, "Okay, how can we afford that opportunity? How do we have time for it?" There's so much going on in the schools, and always, always, school performance comes first. But we do, we do want to bring in the perspective of businesses and what they need and what they have to offer to brand and market, who they are, but then also, how can we get there in the most efficient way with seamless processes? So, creating impact. So, when I jumped in this in 2022, it was, huh, who are we going to be to the community? Or what do we want to accomplish? And that was through a year of listening, and it unfolds every day, and it is being about pivoting, being innovative, but also being supportive and empowering both sides of the table. So, to date, community investment, we have invested over $2,552,000 in programming for the schools. Again, we don't have our own programming, but we mission align with initiatives that will get our end results for our vision and our mission. We have tripled our schools. We started with two pilot schools. We moved to eight last year, and we are now in 17 different schools, 13 of which are public schools. Our goal of course, I'll get to that in a moment, but we want to work with all of our schools. The schools do not have to work with us. It is their choice, because again, this is something extra for them to do, but our goal is to do that heavy lifting, to provide the opportunity, because again, the school leaders want to have business engagement, but a lot of times, it is keeping that partnership consistent, sustainable, and long-lasting, to make it a deep partnership to share that responsibility once again. We have a few special events. We don't do a lot of event, we're not an event networking group, but we create opportunities for students to explore, to explore local opportunities that they otherwise wouldn't know. A lot of their worlds are very, very small, as you know. You only know what you know and your circle of influence, and depending on your location, depending on your small world, what does that look like? We all know, growing up, what we got exposed to in my area. I come from a very small town, a very, somewhat low-income family, less than seven, and either I was going to be a hairdresser or a school teacher. Well, I was both. I dropped out of hair school, and I was a kindergarten first-grade teacher, but I did work in construction with my dad since I was four years old. Had I known now, you know, had I known then what I know now, I would still be in construction. It is a huge passion, but that just speaks to, I'll give you one example. Tennerock, which is a very big love of mine, Tennerock High School does not have a healthcare pathway, but in our events, I'll explain in a moment, provide exploration in things they would otherwise not have an experience in. So, Lakeland Regional Health, and they do it off the chain. They brought about 13 different pathways to Tennerock, and about 150 students got to explore local opportunities with Lakeland Regional Health. I did shed some tears that day of joy, listening to students learn about these pathways and opportunities for their internship, their discovery program, that they can be hired at 16 and have an amazing pathway, and the conversations I overheard, I know were life-changing. So, that's just an example. Our initiatives, again, behind the scenes, we invest, we support, we're a catalyst sometimes on initiatives like the JA 3DE model. We brought that here, again, behind the scenes to Tennerock. We worked on the IDEA Charter School, bringing that here to the Polk County community. To date, the IDEA School had the most and the longest waitlist for enrollment in IDEA history, and to date, the IDEA Lakeland School has the longest waitlist of all the IDEA Schools. That just shows the need. And creating a partnership network, we have, last year, we engaged about 200 different professionals with our schools, over 40 different types of businesses, and reached over 6,000 students. Advancing education, this is a part of the innovation pillar, bringing the Barnett Family Discovery Center, Junior Achievement Discovery Center, will impact over 20,000 students in our area. Very passionate about that initiative. Big lift, but a lot of fun. So, our opportunity, our opportunity is pretty vast. Every day, I get brought things like, "This needs to scale, Melody. There needs to be more opportunity for students." Working with our rural schools that don't have access, I'm very passionate about those schools, and just creating more stronger partnerships and on strategic initiatives, bringing those to the table that otherwise wouldn't know that these opportunities exist for their industry. So, the need, the need. Our upcoming leaders in our community, 66% of them, 16 through 24, are unsure about their career path. They even start college not really knowing what inspires them, what they're passionate about. 74% believe that if they knew more, it could help, it could expand exactly what they're going to focus on and not have to learn later, like, "Wow, this would have been great had I known." I even have grown adults that will attend maybe an event and say, "Man, if I had that opportunity when I was in high school." I hear that a lot. 62% feel a lack of control over their career path, meaning they're going down a road that they were either told to or just found themselves on. They want to gain control through knowledge, through experiences. It only takes a person or an experience to let you know exactly who you are and what you want to accomplish. So, we have lofty plans. We continue to want to scale our work. As some of you know, we moved from just being Lakeland-centric to Polk-centric, knowing our work, what we do for one, we have to do for all, to truly meet our mission goals, that we have to scale our impact, and it's a big district. We are a small, small team of one full-time staff member, myself, a part-time executive assistant, who is amazing, Jane Janik. We recruited an intern this year from Florida Southern, Madison Blight. You will see her out in the community. And behind the scenes, I have a strategic consultant, Heidi Evans, who helps me with all things that are nonprofit. She was a big part of bringing Bonnet Springs Park to our community. So, that's our small team, but we want to continue to be flexible, to be innovative, and work behind the scenes to promote, to scale, to invest in initiatives that meet our mission. So, our target areas, I talked about those earlier. We want to continually be innovative, to seek out things in our nation that are going on, because if they can do it, we can do it, and we can do it better. That's kind of our mantra. And continuing investing in things that align with business goals, strategic goals. I work one-on-one with my business leaders and walk through their strategic plans. You'd be surprised at some of our largest business organizations have working with high schools in their strategic goals, and so I ask, "What is your desired outcome? How are you looking to accomplish that?" They have ideas, they have desired wants, but actually implementing that is sometimes a challenge. They create partnerships, but sometimes they don't last. They don't know all of the amazing things going on in our schools that they can attach themselves that align with their strategic goals, so we're getting that good word out. Our engagement is very strategic. We, there is a continuum of engagement that results in an informed graduate. I read you the statistics earlier, and we want to move those numbers to be very low, that we have informed graduates through branding and marketing opportunities in our local area, that they know exactly what they want to accomplish, and they're loyal to that organization through these engagements, through these experiences, as a person or an experience that go, "Oh, I want to do that. Oh, I love that company." And that informed graduates, then, by the time and investment those business leaders have spent with those students, will pay off. They'll have an ROI for their time. So, our events. If you would have asked me three years ago if this is what we would be doing, I'd say, "No, we're not going to..." You know, it just evolved into creating a systematic approach, doing the heavy lifting behind the scenes, and allowing all students to have opportunities to gain access. So, sat down with our business leaders, Chief Collins was there, and said, "Okay, I want your students to be able to come to any events that they want to." They have to register, they have to want to be there, because again, that listening tour I did, business leaders want to know that those students know who they are, what they have to offer, and want to be in front of them to hear more. So, they're like, "Melody, how are we going to do this?" And so, my bright educators came up with an idea to come to the schools on half-days, where there's not as much academic rigor going on, and so they could be excused from a class to go be inspired at one of our career showcases. So, fast forward, this year, we have over 167 events planned, and we're going to, it'll increase in 2026. So, industry showcases, I'll give Lakeland Regional Health as an example, but I have a long list of businesses that engage in these events. What they'll do is they'll give an overview of what the organization is, and then they provide a small groups that rotate each one of their different career paths, hands-on activities, things that engage students, so they can smell, hear, learn more about what that actually is. And so, they come back together, and then they ask questions. So, generally, that's an exploration, so that's ninth and 10th graders, but since some students have never had any exploration in these areas, we open it up nine through 12. I leave that up to the educators to make those decisions. Flip the Script is for 11th and 12th graders. It's a smaller, a smaller group of students, about 30 to 50, and they get to have one almost like a one-on-one with these business leaders, and they can ask deep questions. "How do I get involved? How do I get prepared? What are your opportunities?" And so, they're great conversations about what's next for them. We piloted career conversations last year, and it was very, very successful. All of our events are exclusive. We don't have any other businesses there when our businesses come to our schools. So, Career Conversation is an easy-breezy lunchtime table in April and May. The businesses have to be hiring. They have to have opportunities for the students. Students have to register, so they have to want to talk to the business leaders. They can be an internship, apprenticeship, hiring, and so hopefully, upcoming graduates have a pathway if they didn't already. But in a cadence of engagement, they've seen a showcase, they've done a Flip the Script, and here comes conversations in April and May, and now they're informed, and they're ready, and they're inspired. Academy Career Connections, we added that this year. It's a very intentional time with the academies. Again, I said that Industry Showcase and Flip the Script is open to anyone. This now is doing a deeper dive with the students on possibly a co-teach on a topic, a demonstration, to elevate their curriculum, but also support the messaging that educators say over and over of how to be ready for that workforce. Finally, virtual field trips. So, brainstormed all through the summer, because a part of this continuum and this exposure and experience is getting them to the workforce, and your district is so broad and so big, transportation is a huge obstacle, timing is obstacle, the cost is an obstacle, and for businesses' perspective, bringing on 40, 50 students onto their workplace is tough. So, again, looking for innovative ideas, there's virtual field trips going on everywhere. So, we are doing our first pilot of these virtual field trips, where we're going to go onsite and walk through, and we have a planned, pre-planned filming process, and then we're going to bring the industry to the schools with the industry leader there to start and stop the field trip for questions and really elevate their understanding of what that career path would look like. Now, this year, we really want to do more career readiness in the light of soft skills. What does a successful entry-level employee look like? So, every event, my business leaders are responsible for giving them a five, 10-minute, "Hey, this is what we've seen," because they'll tell you, they tell me all day, "Melody, they're doing this, they're doing that. I wish they would do this, I wish they would do that. This would make them more prepared." So, they're going to give them the guidance that our educators, our family members do every day a thousand times, but when the business leaders say it, they listen. So, that's something we're adding in and layering in, because we also survey every student after our events, and we capture how they felt about it. Did it move them? Did it make sense? I don't want to call out our engineers, but I did a panel of engineers. It was very, very boring to them. So, one particular engineer, I'm like, "Guys, we got to make this something where it makes sense to them." So, I challenged him. He spent the entire weekend, and we did another event. They had 30, 40 students, but he made this thing out of Legos, civil engineer, right? And with water and all these things, brought plans, all this stuff, so hands-on. The next event we did, this was at Tennerock, we had to close it down. Over 100 students wanted to come. I'm like, "You nailed it." So, but through that feedback, we have ongoing action committees. I'll meet with my educators through the year, go over the surveys, and get their feedback. They can 911 me at any time, though, and go, "Mel, that's not working," and we'll make that change. But we want to continually improve for impact so that it makes sense for both sides of the table, so at the end of the day, those students get what they need, and the businesses felt they made an impact. So, events, again, we're not an event-ridden type of organization. We have done a panel of experts, again, bringing top-notch innovative ideas to our community to inspire and educate, but this year, we replaced our panel of experts with informational breakfast on our Junior Achievement Discovery Center. We have a community meeting, and our annual awards dinner is really where we celebrate the partnerships. So, that's it. We are truly here to partner with our education leaders. I work very closely with Superintendent Hyde, his assistant superintendents, head of programs are really my hip-to-hip that we meet, I talk to them almost daily, our community liaisons, Jeanette Crowley, supporting her efforts. The list is very long. Programming like Polk Rise with Katie Marsh, we are very mission-aligned in her work. So, it's things like that that elevate the business voice, their partnership, the commitment, and supporting our educators. Thank you. Questions?
Wendy is assisting.
It's not working. I don't know. We don't have the list.
And partner very closely with Wendy. She's amazing.
It's not working. There we go.
Want to first just start by saying thank you. Thank you for partnering and your vision for Connected Polk. I mean, you spoke directly to my heart. You know, me and you have had conversations about career tech education, something I'm very passionate about. So, all the hard work you do and your whole staff, your whole staff of two plus an intern, I just want to say thank you first and foremost. Something that really caught my ear when you're talking about it is, you know, as an educator, I've done virtual field trips before, and they're great. But the key, I think, and something that's interesting that you're doing is bringing that industry expert into the classroom, because a lot of times, students will have questions on a virtual field trip, but there's no one there to answer it except for the teacher, who may or may not know about that industry. So having that industry expert, I think is going to be critical, and thank you for that. My question is, so let's say a business is watching this presentation right now, and they're like, wow, I really want to get involved. What is the best way for a business to, to connect with you, to get invol, to get involved in your organization?
Thank you, great question. Before I answer that, I also partner very much with Leanne Bennett. She's amazing, Ty Bruno, I just have to get my thank yous out. Just contact me, reach out, smoke signals. We work first with our community, but I work with any business. Any business that wants to inspire and educate students, I'll put them into our. We have a very long list of dates, and as you saw, lots of opportunities. So I'll strategically listen to how they want to accomplish that, and then match them up.
Thank you, Dr. Ryder.
Of course. ConnectedPolk.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Thank you for hanging on with our technical difficulties.
Yes.
I just want to say, if people haven't followed your organization, the difference that that's the way it's been 2022 and encompassing this entire county. I think that was my biggest, you know, when I would have conversations, I would say, we have 17 municipalities. If we're not moving those municipalities, it really, I mean Lakeland can move, but not without those other municipalities coming along, not if we're going to break the circle of poverty and create employment opportunities. So I've seen that, and that's been the biggest lift, I think, is to, to work with all of those people and community, and the business community. Being the board member for Tennerock and attending a lot of the 3DE things, watching students, when you said that students only know their surroundings or their neighborhood or where they're from, I think the best example of that is students working on the Delta, on the Delta Project, where they had to describe the experience of waiting in an airport when many of them had never been to an airport, and having to research what that was and how they could improve it. I think the community sharing those experiences, which you do very passionately, which I appreciate, I, I share your passion in that, because some, putting those people together in the room with our students and being able to make those connections, I have watched that happen, and I think that's been the most beneficial. Understanding that there are students that are, our students are highly eager to enter the workforce. They need guidance on what's available to them in our community. So we're not only supplying the next entrepreneur, but we are supplying our business community with all of their roles that they need. That's been the biggest, I think, the biggest thing I've seen from the organization in being able to, you know, we brought academies. There's so much they can do, and just pushing them to the next level is what, what Connect Polk Ed has been able to start. So I'm super excited about that. I want to encourage our community members to get involved, even if it's volunteering with those 3DE projects, or, you know, having the opportunity to go and talk to our students. So I appreciate what the organization is doing and what your work here has done, and the passion you bring to that. Sometimes, you know, logistics isn't exciting, but you surely try to make it that for students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Dr. Allen?
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Really appreciate you being in the boardroom today, Dr. Ryder. It really is hard to imagine 2022, and I just think about the amount of infrastructure around this. So thank you for your passion and your persistence on this. Huge. I was really struck with the stat that you shared. You know, 74%, if they had better access, felt, you know, confident in some career choices. So, you know, reflecting on, you know, some of the business partnerships we currently have, do you think there's any particular sector that you would like to see more of? That, you know, if they are listening, and they're in that business sector, that they would step out and, and join hands and, and partner to benefit our students?
That is a great question. Thank you for that. I, I think I have a lot of engagement with Skills Trade, which of course, passionate of mine. Logistics and manufacturing, I'd like to see more. There's lots of opportunities for those that don't know, they don't have a trajectory on to even tech or higher ed, that there's a great career path in those areas, as well as IT, cyber. They don't get out much, and I'd like to see more of them. And so if I was going to have an ask for people listening, logistics, manufacturing, cyber, and IT. Lot of support through healthcare here. Skills trade, so yes.
That's awesome. Okay. And, you know, again, your words were just rich with metaphors and so forth, and I just love all these, you know, I'm thinking of glue and the bridge and so forth. But one that stuck out to me was the deserts of exposure, right? And I, you know, think, what, I don't know, 174 school sites collectively in Polk County, and right, did you mention 17, right? What, what particular area around the county do you think, you know, one of our school-based leaders, you know, maybe hearing this, would step up and take part in partnering with you?
Well, we haven't reached all the public high schools yet. That's more bandwidth. I've had great partnerships with our head of programs and our assistant principals. I just haven't reached all the way to Davenport. We are in Ridge Community, we are in Fort Meade, we are in Mulberry and Emberto now. So it's that in-between Lake Wells area that in Davenport, I need to get more involved with. And working on Roosevelt right now, so my educators are awesome, I'm blessed. I really am. I, it's just getting there as we scale.
And I loved, you know, in your presentation, just the strategic target dates of April and May for those graduates about to step out into the workforce and, and maybe searching. Huge. And then, you know, I'm thinking about this, you know, obviously from a higher ed standpoint, the struggle that we have in tracking our alumni, even in the higher ed situations. And I know School Links is a, a really great tool that I'm hoping will allow us to track that. Any, any thoughts around that? You know, because obviously we want to track the, the success of our students moving beyond high school.
Yes, yes. I do work with tech and higher ed, I didn't include that in my presentation. But yeah, School Links will, will inspire and educate them on their own. And so when, it'll just be another exposure, another way to create an informed graduate and help their trajectory on to higher ed, because it'll show them that path, right? In School Links, this is what you're interested in, this is how you get there. These are the organizations that will truly help you and are the opportunities you want to research deeper. And so I've been behind the scenes onboarding businesses on School Links. It's been a lot, but I tell them that they have to play a role, and they have to engage in this manner to make a difference. Because if they're not there and they don't have a presence, how are they going to know? How are they going to know outside of other, others getting them in front of them? Right?
Indeed. Thank you, Dr. Ryder. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Ms. Collins. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Mr. Keys?
So the disadvantage to being slow on the button, as everybody says, which you would like to say before you get a chance to. But first, I just want to say, thank you for you and your team. The energy that you bring to this is absolutely outstanding. And before coming on to the board, I, I witnessed that firsthand. And being a member of the business community, I really appreciate what you do. One of the things that I was really excited about is the rebranding that took place. And I think, as Ms. Miller spoke to, is that to encompass the entire county, I think was instrumental in, in kind of creating that goal and the vision. And one of the things you said was absolutely outstanding, is we're talking about these businesses, and part of their strategic plan is wanting to connect to the schools. And a powerful thing about that is listening, right, to business and industry, and where are their gaps, and how can we assist them? And I think, thinking about it from that way and taking that type of approach is absolutely fantastic, and, and, and really makes the business community feel like they're engaged. The other thing I wanted to say is, you know, I've seen, I've been to those 3DE events and, and seeing the excitement the students have in participating. I think it is, it all comes together so well. And if we can continue to bring the business community together with education and create pathways for these students, because you do have these areas where, you know, I was kind of one of those too. I think I changed my major two or three times in college, you know, when I was there. Because of the same, you made that statement, if I would have seen these type of opportunities when I was in school, the pathway I could have taken would have, would have greatly benefited, I think, you know, and overall goals and, and being able to achieve. So again, thank you for you, thank you for what you do, and, and for being engaged, and also for engaging us, you know, and, and being kind of a, a partner we can come to, to be out in the community and, and voice the concerns that we have. So appreciate you, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Keys. And Ms. Fields?
Thank you for your presentation today. I had a question about the schools. Do you have a list of the schools that you all are working with? I don't really need it right this minute, but that would be nice to know. And then, can you tell us a little bit more about the community meeting that you're going to be having in January? What does that look like?
Yes, that's a Connected Polk community meeting. We started it last year to bring together our community. We are a community that share passion and purpose for our work. What we like to do at that meeting is update, because we work so behind the scenes. We don't like to celebrate until things are across a finish line. But we do want everyone to know in our community what we're working on, and what part they can play to help impact that progress. We celebrate successes and just come together as a community and know that it's, it's a partnership, and it's just a, a day to celebrate that as well.
It's like an update, an annual update?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my other question is, I, I thought it was interesting that you said that ideal school has the most on the waiting list? Do you know what that number is compared to other counties?
I do not.
Now, that's interesting, though.
Yeah.
Because I've heard a lot of neat things about idea. I just was interested in knowing what that looks like as it relates to, to numbers.
Yeah, we're having, in November, we're having the ribbon cutting, so I'll invite you to that. And/or, I'm very connected with them, I could always ask that, that question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Before we, we leave, I just want to recognize and acknowledge the work that I've done with Dr. Ryder, and, you know, working in schools for as long as I have. We always have very high expectations of schools. And Dr. Ryder and her team that bring that paralleled high level of support, which sometimes that's the disconnect. We have high expectations, but we don't support enough. And I just want to publicly thank you, because you've been amazing, you and your team to work with.
Thank you. And you all have tolerated my persistence and communication and desire. So I thank all of you, your, your job is immense and so very important, and we support and appreciate you all fully. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to move on, and I believe Byron Morrison, Senior Director with the Division of Schools, is here, and he's going to share updates with us on school improvement plans.
Hello? All right, good morning. How is everyone doing? Sorry, this is very high-tech. All right, good morning. As Ms. Collins said, my name is Byron Morrison. I'm one of the senior directors for the Division of Schools. I support the Northwest region, which is mainly North Lakeland. And I'm excited to be able to fill in today for Ms. Bennett, who's out with the superintendent, just to give you an update on the school improvement process that we've taken. So thank you to the board for having me today. Thank you, Ms. Collins, for inviting me to come speak on this particular area of our work. Okay, so the school improvement plan process is something that's been identified by the state. As you know, all students, or my, all schools are required to complete one as a part of that continuous improvement process. And there is some statute language in there. The new pro, the new platform that we use, the SIMS II, as it's being called, it allows schools to meet all those statutory requirements based on the different fields that have to be filled out and completed. It also includes the ESSA components, which is a part of that Every Student Succeeds Act, and it really targets those subgroups that are identified within campuses. And just for the record, we do have a variety of subgroups, including the ethnical ones, so black, white, African, Hispanic, Asian, Pacific Islander. But also, we have some other ones that are attached to more so status. So thinking about programming for ELL, English Language Learners, and our students with disabilities. And we also do have the different tags, and I'll kind of go into those with the ATSI, TSI, and CSI designations, and we'll kind of talk a little bit what that looks like for each campus as well. Okay, so as Ms. Collins mentioned earlier, we talked very much about high expectation, but also high support. So one thing that Ms. Bennett and the team that was a part of this process did, we really wanted to make sure that we empower principals to have a good process as they go through the school improvement piece. So we offered these help sessions, and we built a timeline. One of the first pieces was Mrs. Bennett was able to work with the new principals at the new and novice trainings back in the summer. So she was able to get in front of them to give them some different pointers around what the school improvement process should look like, things, things to think about in terms of how we reflect on those processes and building out those appropriative narratives and action plan steps. Then we had a variety of help sessions that were offered through Microsoft Teams. Again, a first one for our new and novice principals, to make sure that they felt comfortable with the process, because they are taking over campuses for the first time, even though they may have had a part in the school improvement process as assistant principals. Wanted to make sure they really felt comfortable as the building leaders with those. Then we did one for the charters. We did a separate one there, because a lot of our charter schools, that process isn't as familiar for some of them. So giving them the opportunity to come in and meet with the team, to go through their data and give some pointers and advice on how they can build strong school improvement plans themselves. And then finally, offering out to everyone. So our veteran administrators, because we have a lot of vets that may have taken over new campuses or moved levels from elementary to middle, or middle to elementary, middle to high, or schools that are in combo spaces, so making sure that they felt comfortable in their new spaces. So still offering and being a listening ear for them as well through those help sessions. So they were all getting similar support, but it kind of varied depending on the needs, where they were able to just kind of have open questions, and we were able to get them the right types of answers. All right, so on July 18th, all SIPs were due to the regional assistant superintendents for feedback. That was back in July, July 18th, I believe was the date. And those were reviewed. So we had a form within the Division of Schools that we use as a common form, and we just offered feedback to the SIPs that were submitted in their draft form. And a lot of the feedback was really more around asking probing questions around the action steps that they want to take, and really drilling down on the plan for monitoring, making sure that schools had a solid understanding, okay, how are you going to monitor the many things that you want to accomplish within your SIP over the course of the year? Those revisions, once they got that feedback, revisions were submitted back to the regionals for a final approval to make sure that everything looked good. And then the SIPs, of course, were submitted to the state by August 1st. And right now, we also have, we're at the point where we're getting ready to move into the space where they'll be published. I believe November 1st is going to be the published date where they're made available to the public. CSI SIP plans. So those are those schools that fall into that comprehensive support. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides, but those plans, in addition to being reviewed by us at the district, they're also reviewed by the state with the Bureau of School Improvement. Okay, so here are some of these identifiers, and you see that we have a lot of designated statuses here. ATSI, that's basically for a school that has a subgroup that's performing under 41%. TSI is for a school that has a subgroup that's performing under 41% for three consecutive years, or if they get a federal, I'm sorry, if they have at least one subgroup that's performing under 32% for three consecutive years. So 41 is the key threshold to get you flagged, but 32% really gets you, is like a more of alarming flag. So three years at 32% on the federal index will get you that TSI. CSI is more of a multitude of things. One of the key ways is if you have a subgroup that's six years or more consecutive, with a particular subgroup performing under 41. If you have an overall federal index of under 41, or of course, you have a D or F school grade. And then for the high schools specifically, if you find that the graduation rate is 67% or lower, that will get you an automatic CSI designation. Okay, so this is kind of what ESSA looks like here on our district right now. So ATSI, this include, and this information does include the public and the charter schools. We have 39 ATSI sites, so those are the schools that have that one that's performing under the 41%, but not necessarily for six consecutive years. We have one that's TSI, and then we have 56 that are CSI. At the bottom, though, I do want to note that we have 40 schools that currently have no designation, which is a really big win, especially as compared to the other large districts in our state. So I can think of two schools off the top of my head, Southwest Middle, Westwood Middle. Both have cleared their designations as, as of this last school year. So we have a lot of great things happening with our schools doing the right work, and with our CSI sites for the ESSA subgroups. We have two very, very strong focus areas that we're leveraging with this district leadership to move some of those as well. All right, so the district requirements, so as you can see across the board, all of them require you to submit that SIP plan to the district for approval. The big one is the mid-year reflection. We are trying to be much more diligent this year as a district around the mid-year reflections, but also what we're doing before the mid-year reflection. So tailoring a lot of our visits when we go out to campuses and leveraging, you know, the school improvement plan to make sure that those things are happening, and make sure that the schools feel comfortable with the monitoring, or making adjustments as needed. But the formal mid-year reflection is due February 1st for the schools that are TSI and CSI. CSI schools also get a little bit of additional layer, so they have some deliverables that may be due to the Bureau. CSI schools also get a little bit of additional layer, so they have some deliverables that may be due to the Bureau of School Improvement. They may have onsite support from a specialist from the Bureau of School Improvement as well. And then again, we just make sure that we submit those all in and we monitor them for the effective implementation. Keyword, monitor. Okay, and then this is just the timeline of the due date, so we've already hit one. The SIPs were due, so those have already been submitted to the state. November 1st, as I mentioned earlier, they will be available to the public. So public will be able to review those from the PDF form on the SIPs, on the SIMS platform with the state. And then those mid-year reflections will be due February 1st of 2026. And again, we'll be working hand in hand with schools to support them to make sure they feel good about their mid-year reflections. Okay, that's all I got. Any questions for me?
Dr. Allen.
Just want to say. Want to say I really appreciate this data and just giving us that big, broad perspective. You know, as board members, we've all received our packets, you know, with school improvement plans across the district and within our individual districts. I was just, you know, probing the website a little bit, and definitely I like some of the enhancements of that. That's something that I definitely looked at in the past. One thing, I love to surprise my principals when I come out and visit and, you know, I evaluate their SIP and I'll ask them a specific question. They're like, oh, you read that thing? Like, yeah, absolutely, this is great data. And just to see the alignment with our strategic plan is very affirmative. So appreciate the work. Thanks for the data. Very thorough. Appreciate you.
Problem?
No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
You're welcome, Ms. Collins. Have a great day. Thank you, everyone.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at this time, I believe Teresa Green is going to come forward and share with us proposed rule development for school board policies. And Mr. Davis.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So we have 11 policies for you today. As you, I think Chad talked to you during one of the board retreats about we're breaking up these policies over the next several meetings to get them through the process to get us up, you know, up to date. And so these are all the policies from our 6,000s and 7,000s groups. So there's 11 that I'm bringing for you today. There are a few that are still hanging out there that we'll bring to you at a later meeting from the 6,000s and 7,000s group. The majority of these today come from, the first seven come from the Uniform Grant Guidance, which is the Office of Management and Budget, like federal guidance. They update these periodically, and then Neola takes those, updates and revises the policy. So some of them are based on, you know, statutory requirements, some administration priorities. It also just helps clarify specific sections of the policies, like best practices, improve flow, address inconsistencies. And then the goal is just to improve federal financial assistance, management, transparency, and oversight, just to make it more accessible and easily understandable guidance. So that's going to be Policy 6D110, Grants, Grant Funds. 6111, Internal Controls. 6112, Cash Management of Grants. 6114, Cost Principles, Spending Federal Funds. 6325, Procurement, Federal Grants and Funds. 7310, Disposition of Surplus Property. And 7450, Property Inventory. Do you have any questions on any of those policies before we move on?
Ms. Miller?
I just want to, I'm trying to pull up the summary that's on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't find what I was reading, but I can tell you that I sent an email just to be helpful for next time. And I think we've mentioned this before on these summaries. When you're giving the summary of the change, if it could include, if it could include, I'll just read, the one is revisions include modifications to various definitions. It's not a clear summary of what we've changed. It would be helpful because the public reads that if I can have a clear explanation of what we're changing or at least defining, if we're not doing it because of Neola, then what was, like, what was, why are we, why are we changing at that time? Is it to meet a legislative requirement? And then why is Neola changing it? Just, I think I just need a little bit more information. And if phone calls ahead of time would be preference, that, I mean, I can do that as well. It's just when I read revisions include modifications to various definitions, I know as a public person to read that, they would want more information on why are you revising? Who is initiating the revision? Is it changing a practice? So that's all. And the summary would, it would be helpful for me if the summaries were a little more detailed in the change. And I appreciate that we use Neola, but Neola is a tool. And I want to know that my staff is reviewing and making suggestions more than just because Neola said.
So I will say, and I know Mr. Davis is here to expat on that, we do whatever revisions we get from Neola. So all of our guidance for our policy updates usually come from Neola. So that's based off either legislative changes or as they're reviewing policies, trying to clean them up, sometimes removing outdated information, not necessarily because of a legislative change, but just because information could be outdated or we could say it more clear. We do always send it to staff, so staff is always looking at this. We do also sit down with both of our attorneys to go through the policies before we bring them to you. So it's not just taking Neola's recommendations. It's also staff looking at it and making sure that it aligns with the way we do things here and our attorneys before we bring it to you.
I, thank you, I appreciate that. I think it's just confusing if we're changing definitions, but it's not because of legislation, if we could just get the reason we changed it or the staff's opinion of why it needed to be changed.
So actually, that's what this work session is for. Our staff are here. If you have questions, this is where we have that conversation. To put everything into writing just to preempt the meeting, it's really an extra step that I don't know that is really feasible because there, these are, we can give you a long document that you can also read in addition to reading the policies, but this is really where that conversation, that public conversation happens. So if you have one you're looking at, they have questions on, our staff is here prepared to speak to it. And the public can then hear the reasoning behind some of the changes that are being made.
Okay, so can somebody, can you explain the revisions include modifications to various definitions, but they're not, they're not revisions from legislative change? They were revised due to Neola's suggestions?
Which policy are we talking about?
Yeah, which one are we talking about?
Let me go back to the, it's the first one. It was on the summary, the original summary.
So the grant funds, Paul, 6110, is that what we're talking about or?
I'm going back, the summary's not on, the summary that I, was there an update to the, because now I don't see the summary at all. Here, okay, here's the summary. The email was sent yesterday, and it, hold on one second, I'll look for the policy.
And the public is always free to reach out. Our contact information is on there, so if the public has questions, we are more than happy to take those calls and have meetings, whatever the public needs to make sure that they are clear on what is happening here.
It looks like it's been updated. So my question is, my question is, when we do the revisions that are not legislatively mandated but Neola's suggestion, you're advising that the community and/or reach out either at this time or before to find out. I'm just trying to provide information so you're not backlogged with questions.
We've not had anyone reach out, so we, I don't know how much that would be.
Okay, it might not be on this one, it'll be on others. I'm just going from summaries in the past. So what I'll do is go pull the old summaries that we used to get, and we can compare them to what we're getting now to see if there's a way that we can improve them for the public. Did you have something to, okay.
Yes, Ms. Miller. Mr. Davis and Ms. Griffin provide us the departments, this one actually falls under me, with a summary when we start our review process.
Okay.
And it might be helpful if the board sees that so they can, I'm going to ask that they send you a copy. But for this one, the Office of Management and Budget revised several parts of their OMB guidelines, which is what triggered the review.
Okay.
So then we went back and looked at that. We looked at Title II, I talked with the Grants Department. We went through the policy, and that's where these changes came from. But I think this might be what you're looking for.
I do also want to say that what I sent Heather is also what is in here.
It's attached to that.
It's in the PowerPoint and it's on the summary.
But it came from.
So it's the same, the same language is literally copied and pasted from what I sent her to what I put in here.
So the revisions came from that, from?
The Office of Management and Budget.
Okay, so that, in the summary, it just said they were made. If we could add, and I get that you have it in the document, but that one document would be helpful. I'll just send an.
I don't know if we're looking at the same summary, because the summary that I attached to the agenda says the Office of Management and Budget revised several parts of OMB guidance for grants and agreements, which is the same thing that Heather has.
Okay, I'll forward what I sent Mr. Hyde yesterday, because what was attached previously is not, is not what I'm seeing here.
Okay, I don't, I'm not sure what happened there, because the attachment for these policies explains all of the OMB regulations, the same that I sent to staff, to Heather and her.
So it must have been a previous attachment, because it, okay.
I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I don't know. I'm sorry about that.
No, it's fine. And you guys do a great job. I'm trying to make it easier for people who are looking at that.
Include the, because Neola sends us a synopsis of why the policies are being revised. And I try to include that exact language on the summary and on the PowerPoint that I do so that it's clear what's coming from statute, what's just coming from Neola cleaning up the policy. And so I try to include the same language everywhere.
Okay, I appreciate.
But yeah, let me know if there's ways to improve it.
And I, and this is not a criticism of what you do, because I don't know how you manage all of these at one time. But I, but I do appreciate you looking at that, and I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Miller. Any other questions?
I have a few more policies. Were there any questions on those before I move on to the other policies?
Okay.
No, okay. Oh.
Dr. Allen.
Yeah, I was curious on Policy 7240. That's a pretty expansive replacement. I don't know if we.
Gotcha. So I have a few more. Did you have any questions on the first seven that, that we did?
I was curious, is that prompted by the state statute change that there's?
7240?
Yeah, because we're rescinding the previous one and replacing.
So 7240, part of it, there were statute changes that were added to that policy. Also, our policy differed significantly from the Neola template from when we originally adopted the policy back in 2013 or whenever it was. And so we're aligning our policy to fit the Neola template more so that when we have these revisions and things, it's easier to update. But there also were the statutory from 1013 and the 119.07 that were added to this policy. So it was just to make a cleaner policy for moving forward.
Yeah. And I guess top of mind, and this could be a question for Mr. Green, we are in the midst of going through a site acquisition, you know, process. Does this change where we're at? And Mr. Green, you'll have to answer this now, but it could be something that, you know, I'd like to have a response from.
I know when speaking with staff about it, with facility staff, it aligns with what we're currently doing. And they actually prefer the Neola template over what our current policy was. It was just more detailed.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have, Ms. Collins. Thank you.
Mr. Green, did you?
Just that, we'll keep that in mind. We'll keep that in mind when we're, for the current or future site acquisitions. But I didn't see any inconsistencies with, and we ran that by staff as well. All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Sharpless.
I was going to wait till after you presented 7240, but.
So yeah, but I mean.
Since we're already there at 7240, I'll go ahead and ask my question. So the previous one, the policy we rescinded specifically says, in the first paragraph of it, the first sentence, I guess, "The district must undertake the process of site planning and selection as determined in the adopted interlocal agreement for public school facility planning." And when I read the replacement policy, there's no reference to the interlocal agreement. And so I was just curious how that will be impacting the site selection process.
I can't speak specifically to how.
Site acquisition process.
I'm not sure, Josh, if you have any thing to.
So that's a great, great question, Board Member Sharpless. So Policy 7240 lays out our, how we actually acquire property, and there are references to the interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement is a district-adopted joint planning agreement between the district and all the municipalities. So 7240 is part of the equation about how we go about identifying and acquiring property. But the ILA in terms, is more of a joint planning tool to make sure that when, where we are identifying properties that we are looking to acquire, that it aligns with the cities or the counties' capital improvement projects, i.e., we're not going to go buy a piece of property that there's no utility lines out there for. So it's, that's where the two nest.
And then I guess my question is, should that also be included in the new policy that we're adopting? The reference to that interlocal agreement.
You're saying that, that line?
Well, it just says that, you know, as determined in the adopted interlocal agreement for public schools planning. And then I didn't see that in the new one. I guess Board Member Keys has a comment to that, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if I'm off on this one, but I would think that the last line of the.
Second paragraph in the newly adjusted policy, the additionally, the board will coordinate with long-range or comprehensive plans of local, regional, state government agencies, kind of doesn't call out the ILA, but suggests, am I wrong in saying that?
It doesn't make it clear, but all of our municipal cities and the county adopt by reference our five-year capital plan, 10-year capital plan, and 20-year by reference. So there's still that mechanism that they still adopt our five-year, 10-year, 20-year capital plan as outlined in the interlocal agreement. So it is consistent between the interlocal agreement, comprehensive planning from the cities and the county, and Policy 7240.
And I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Sharpless, but I tend to agree with what you're saying on that, that if we have the ILA in place and it's specifically called that, I think that they need to be cross-referenced, that needs to, anything the municipalities has needs to reference 7240 in our policy. But also, we need to, you know, speak out also in that, what we're calling it, so there is no confusion. Only for the subject of being, hey, I can make the assumption on that last line in the second paragraph that that's what it's, you know, communicating. But if we can, if we have something in place that we reference, if referenced specifically, that gets rid of any gray, because else we know how gray sometimes policy can be.
So we can take that language from our existing policy, that sentence, so that we make sure that it actually names the interlocal agreement and just add it to that section that Mr. Keys just pointed out, if that's the consensus. And Mr. Green, if that's what you think would make this policy a little stronger. Yeah, okay. So this won't come to public hearing until December 9th, if my math is right right now. So we can make those changes before it comes to public hearing and add that statement in there. Does that?
We had more comments on it there, too.
Okay.
Mr. Sharpless, were you done with your comments? Okay. Mr. Keys, you're done with your comments. Ms. Wyatt?
I actually would advocate for leaving it as is and not specifically mentioning the interlocal agreement, partially for the reason of, you know, we, in the interlocal agreement specifically took language out of state statute that is no longer language in state statute, and now we're working on getting out of that. I think that it makes sense to reference that we're working with our local governments and to use the interlocal agreement more as a procedural guide, not necessarily keeping it in policy to. We've signed an interlocal agreement, it is an agreement between all of our municipalities, but leaving it as that's the procedure that backs up this policy. I don't know that we need to reference it by name as opposed to, would be my thoughts. But I think Mr. Keys disagrees with me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wyatt. And Ms. Fields.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Wyatt. I think that that last statement on the second paragraph would take care of that.
Mr. Keys?
Yeah, so it's interesting that Ms. Wyatt brought that up, because you've kind of, I wouldn't say I see the light, but I will tell you that in, last week in going through policy and governance through FSBA, one of the things that we had mentioned in group session was to, in policy, right, make reference to procedures directly. So I think where I tend to agree with you saying, I think, I think that the, you know, reference before that last paragraph, the last sentence of the second paragraph makes sense, and it does that. I think that if we start doing that, then there is a procedure in place that we have to have something that references it directly. So if, I agree with you. What I'm saying is that there's a procedure in place, and that's a signed document, and it's an agreement, and we can go reference it. But there should be somewhere noting that here's the policy, and here's the procedure which we exercise or enforce that policy. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? So what, what we talked about in that meeting is, is to say, hey, when policy is proposed, having some type of reference, whatever it may be, to the procedure that matches the policy. Because I think that's a big disconnect sometimes is having procedure that matches that. I don't know how that's accomplished, but I think it's helpful to note, at least. Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Okay. Um, so I just want to make sure that I get clarification on how to move forward on that one. So we will just leave it as is for public hearing and then, I mean, I'm not sure how I should move. I want to, I just want to make sure I have clear direction moving forward, leaving from here.
Yep. Procedurally, I would say that if, if a board member would like to see a change, that you work with your general counsel on some language and propose that as an amendment, because we really shouldn't be taking any kind of an action here. We talk about consensus a lot, and if there is a general, you know, consensus without differing of opinions, that may be one thing we could come back and work on. And, and if you have any questions or things you want to explore, we can do that research for you, work with Neola, come up with ideas. But procedurally, the, the cleanest way to do that would be to bring it as an amendment and, and yeah, during the public hearing, bring it as an amendment. If you have things you prepare before the board meeting, which would be ideal, we could get that out to you so you have it in writing to see what's being considered. But as far as us being able to take direction from individual board members that could be conflicting, that, that would be very difficult to do at this point in the work session.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, I was just gonna speak in favor.
I was just gonna speak in favor of the interlocal agreement. I know it has been part of our discussion and I, I don't know where that document is at this point as far as, because I know it's been something that's been in discussion, right? So, and I, I would probably more align with Mr. Keys that we do need to have a unifying document that I think collectively as a county that we're referencing. And I know that, that discussion to clean that language up has been initiated already. I don't know where we're at in that, but I would, I would be in favor of that. So I don't know, Mr. Green, how you want to proceed from here.
Good question. So the new language, the very bottom, it talks about, well, I'd say the, the current policy references ten thirteen thirty-six, the statute. And among other things, under the negotiations section, it says, "The superintendent shall be responsible for site acquisition negotiations and compliance with other provisions set forth in Florida statute ten thirteen thirty-six." Looking at ten thirteen thirty-six, subsection six, it says, "If the school board and local government have entered into an interlocal agreement or have developed a process to ensure consistency between the local government comprehensive plan and the school district education facilities, site planning and selection must be consistent with the interlocal agreement plan." So in other words, it's incorporated by reference into the statute because it says we're gonna comply with ten thirteen thirty-six. So without specifically naming it, I think we're, we're still gonna be compliant with that. I think we're, I think we're okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. The last couple of policies, just a note on Policy sixty-two thirty-four, which is use of lottery discretionary funds. This is more of a technical change. There were just two legal references added to the policy, but we included it here. There's also a drafting note that's just for board members and staff to review. It won't live on the policy once it's in our manual, but it just notes that even though lottery funds aren't currently allocated right now, that they're still referenced in Florida law. So we can leave, um, school boards have the authority to decide whether to keep this policy or not. We don't currently have lottery funds allocated, but it's still in state law and it could. And so we could just leave the policy as is. There were two statutes that were updated in it. So that's where we stand on that policy. So the recommendation is just to leave it in our policy manual. And then Policy seventy-five forty point oh two, web content apps and services, and then seventy-five fifty, or seventy-five forty-four, use of social media. Those are also almost technical changes. It just, we're changing Twitter to X, is now called X. So that's changed in the policy. And then there were a couple, like grammatical things changed in that policy as well. Any more questions?
Dr. Allen?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Thanks. I just want to go back to the lottery funds. We're leaving it in case one day there's magic and they decide to return those back. Exactly. Okay. Exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis? Appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and move on to item four, which is Senior Director Candy Amato. She's gonna come forward with the Schools of McHale Charter renewal. Good morning, Candy.
Good morning, everyone. All right, so before you today is the Schools of McHale actual renewal for the three existing McHales, which is South McHale, which serves grades K six, McHale Academy Central, which also serves K six, and McHale Academy Technology, which is seven twelve. Just some historical information, just something really quick snapshot, since there are three schools, all three are considered high-performing, and because of that, they've been, or they've earned the designation of a high-performing charter system. So in nineteen ninety-eight, Big McHale, as we always call it, because it's just easier, Big McHale Academy, converted from a district school to a charter school. In two thousand three, they added McHale Central. Two thousand six, they added South McHale. And then in two thousand thirteen, they were designated as a high-performing charter school by the state of Florida. In today's presentation for the renewal, we will be looking at two specific statutes, the charter statute one zero zero two point three-three, and then the high-performing charter statute one zero zero two point three-three-one. Because they are recognized as a high-performing charter system, they are eligible for fifteen year renewal. And we have three grounds in which to non-renew, and they are spelled out. They're very specific. Basically, they fail to participate in the educational accountability system, which they can't do because they're high-performing, so which means they do participate. They are not financially solvent, or they're not meeting financial needs, not a problem, or there's a material violation of law, which that has not come to light. So this is Big McHale's actual overview snapshot of their school grades and their performance. So the big chart obviously goes back to two thousand fifteen. Clearly, you can see they have been consistently an A school, high-performing. The bottom chart is last year's data. Obviously, they are missing a school grade for two thousand twenty-one, but good reason. So as you can see, they are consistently high-performing, they're testing a hundred percent of their kids, and their grad rate speaks for itself. South McHale, which is the K six school, again, it, their data starts back from two thousand seven. They do have a couple of Bs sprinkled in there, but not enough to determine that they're, you know, they're doing what they need to be doing. Last year, they also were a high, earned an A, and again, testing a hundred percent of their students. Um, McHale Central, same thing. They're consistently an A school dating back to two thousand four, and again, testing a hundred percent of their kids and showing that they are academically high-performing. Budget-wise, there are no, no issues, no concerns. They are definitely financially solvent. As you can see, they have a healthy fund balance. Their audits are always clean. There is no concerns or reservations about their financial status. This is their ideal growth plan. Again, this is just their plan. Things change, but this is what they're looking at when they're wanting to renew it for fifteen years. So this is approximately what their enrollment would look like over the course of the next fifteen years for the three McHale schools. And then these are some remarks from the charter renewal team. Again, they're performing exceptionally well in the area of E S E. All students are being tested and accountability measures are strong. The assessment department did identify one area of growth, and that is their middle school acceleration points. However, the McHale team and the assessment team are coordinating a meeting so that McHale can have a better understanding of how they can capture the rest of those middle school acceleration points. There's no concerns from the finance department. They are, no issues with the E S O L and their students that they're serving. They are continuing to maintain a high level of standards, and McHale demonstrates great Overall, the recommendation of the charter renewal team was to basically renew them for fifteen years. It was a pretty short and sweet meeting with the renewal team.
Mr. Sharpless?
Uh, first just want to. There we go. First, just want to commend McHale Academy for all the just excellence I've seen, you know, in your data here. Certainly, high-performing is, is something that comes to mind there. The only question I have is, I'm looking at the fifteen-year growth plan, and I see, you know, McHale Academy Technology and South McHale Academy, I see growth there, and McHale Academy Central is stagnant at five ninety. And I'm just curious on if you can speak to, is, is that just a capacity issue? Like, like, what, like, how come there's no growth in that, in that one school?
We are landlocked.
Okay.
We own that city block and that's all we, all we own and it's covered.
Okay. Okay, excellent. I knew there was a reason, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Other comments or questions for Ms. Amato?
I wanted to say something.
Ms. Fields?
Thank you. As it relates to McHale Academy Central, they're doing an amazing job there. I'm sure you know that. Mr. Backus and the other staff are just awesome. So the five ninety, when I saw that, I knew that it was basically a situation where they don't have any opportunity to, to grow. If they did, I'm sure they would pack it up.
I'm sure they would.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this will come to the October twenty-eighth board meeting for a final vote.
Okay. And the final thing that, that I have today is item D, just for information, is the two thousand twenty-six Head Start continuation grant. That information is attached in the agenda. And that is it for the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Great to have you over there.
Thank you.
Your thoughts and contributions today. Board members, I'm gonna move down to our committee reappointments. This is brought before you for two reasons. We, we do need to fill the appointments that Mr. Nolte was taking part in, and I would like to bring those two before you. That would be the Central Florida School Board Coalition and then the Polk County Head Start Policy Council, and would maybe take some recommendations from you all for individuals that could potentially serve in that capacity. Mr. Sharpless, you are recognized.
I have a question. Do you know when these two organizations meet? How, how frequently and, and what days and times?
Yeah, I, I don't have the absolute on the Polk County Head Start Policy Council, and Ms. Yvette can maybe pull that data for us, how many times they're currently meeting. I do know that if we go under our library, I think we can access that. I was looking at the Central Florida School Board Coalition. That meeting is approximately once a month, and it's via Zoom, and that typically happens on a Monday at nine thirty A M. All right. Ms. Fields, you are recognized.
I guess my question has been, has anybody been attending the Head Start Council meetings that you're aware of? Because I know that it's a requirement, but it's a part of the grant that we have representation from, from the board, so just out of curiosity. And I know that they were meeting in Lakeland on Central, right down the street from Girls' Inc. So I know that once a month, I believe.
Yeah, it looks like the Monday, or rather, it's Fridays at nine A M., and it's a monthly meeting.
Did it move to Friday?
And if that's incorrect, we, we do have staff to help us out.
Good morning. Polk County Head Start Policy Council meets once a month, and typically, I believe it's the last Thursday of every month. I'm not sure if that will continue, but I believe that's what it's scheduled right now. We usually have been meeting at West Area. We have now opened our Elbert Center on Elbert School Campus, and we are now going to be meeting there instead. And to answer your question, Mrs. Fields, there has not been anyone attending lately.
Thank you.
I believe it's at nine. Usually goes nine to ten, nine to eleven, depending on what's on the, on the agenda.
All right, Ms. Fields, are you, all right. Ms. Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you. I appreciate you mentioning that. And also, Chair, if we could discuss, like, how, making sure there's an alternate, because grants are important and they, I know they have a reporting mechanism that they have to, they have to meet, even presenting to us, they have to, like, present to us in a training, you know, when they give us information that's also required from that grant. So maybe discussing an alternate would be helpful so we're not in deficiency.
The one this Thursday will be the wrap-up of the year from last year. The following month will be the first of the year, and that one will include policy council training, and we definitely need to have someone there for that.
And I'll, I'll say they're well-attended by families. I was surprised at how many families showed to that, even, they were driving from East Side to come to the West Central, or West Adult School. So it's very important. Also, some of the agencies that show up there, it's very helpful to the families, and the families really appreciate having that connection. Is, I mean, we don't want to be just compliance-driven. As much as we are compliance-driven for grants, it's important for families to be able to see representation.
Yes, thank you for saying that, because it's not compliance-driven for us at all. It's absolutely, if it's not useful, then why do it?
Right. Thank you.
All right. I'm still, at this point, looking for nominations or someone that can step in to fill that gap. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Wyatt, you're recognized.
Thank you. I am happy to attend the one next Thursday if we just need to have a presence there. I'm a little concerned about signing up to do it the rest of the year, just because I will likely, I don't know when I'll be unavailable over the next two months, but I'm happy to go this coming Thursday, just to make sure there's someone there if needed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Mr. Keys, you are recognized.
And unless this is absolutely instrumental, that we handle this now, I think we need a little more information on, do that, because I know that calendars can get crazy. So I, I would be hesitant about committing to something that I wouldn't be able to fulfill. And so if I could, you know, get kind of a timeline or when the meetings were, I know we spoke about it, but just to see a document so I can match that to what current obligations are, I, I would prefer that. Is this something that we are able to bring back immediately to our next work session or board meeting? I think a little bit more time would help. And I appreciate Ms. Wyatt saying she'll fill in in the interim. That's very helpful.
All right, very good. So I'll have Ms. Wyatt collect that data, and we can look at the calendar for the remaining time of the year to be, no, I'll have Ms. Yvette to get the future dates and send those out to you all. And like I, just as a follow-up, the other one, the Central Florida School Board Coalition, that one again meets on Mondays once a month via Zoom at nine thirty. I was looking at my calendar, because I, you know, we do get the invites on those from the coalition, and it seems pretty sporadic on which Mondays that one's happening. I was trying to see if there was a pattern, just looking at my calendar and did not see that. So I can double-check on that one as well, but Ms. Yvette will then get that information out to you. And then, secondly, you can see also there, the discussion around an alternate for the junior achievement as well would be another appointee that we would like to do, just to basically, similarly, to fill the gap whenever we're busy and our, our calendars get tied up as well. So that would be another recommendation I'd like to have from the board as well.
Friday mornings?
Friday mornings.
Friday mornings? But what Friday morning?
It's, it, they're not, they haven't been monthly, so it's been kind of.
Every other month.
Yeah.
Let me find out.
All right, so again, we can collect that from Ashana, see if we have a schedule that's out for the remaining portion of the year, and get that to you as well for someone to fill that gap. So we'll have that to vote during our next public meeting as well. Ms. Wyatt, anything else from you?
I say, Ms., do you already have the dates for it?
I, we just had discussed it at the last work session. I said I, I have the dates on my calendar, I believe, already, but I, that I'm happy to fill in for those. We've been working pretty closely with them in my other roles, so I already have those on my calendar to attend.
All right. And Ms. Miller?
I was gonna ask two things. One, I would be willing to be an alternate for Head Start. It is very far from where I live, and my commitments are, if we're meeting at Elbert now, which my commitments can vary. So, if I, if we need, if, while people are looking at their schedules, if somebody can commit, but maybe not make all the meetings, to let me know. But I was gonna ask, Chair, in the library that you referenced, does it hold when these meetings meet and the times? That would be helpful.
Yeah, they do. Again, if, up on the right-hand side, if you click down on the library-
So, the JA meetings are there?
Hmm.
Yes, they are.
Okay, good. That'll help us.
That one, it just says it meets every other month on Friday mornings, and I don't know how accurate that one is. But again, just something that's continual, that we have to update throughout the year. All right, Mr. Sharpless, you're recognized.
I, I'm good now. We had a discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. So, at this point, we know Ms. Wyatt has committed to the Head Start the upcoming, correct? All right. And then, we'll move from there. We'll get the calendar out to you for those two, and then, we meet together again. I'll look for those nominations, and we'll vote on that during our action items. So, we'll have those as an action item on our next public meeting. All right. Now, we'll move down, board members, to our board member comments. So, here's an opportunity, if you want to speak and bring anything forward at this point in regards to your committee work along the way. So, here's your opportunity. All right, seeing no comments at this point, board members, this meeting is now adjourned.